I would like to welcome everyone to the January 23rd, 2025 monthly meeting of the Henrico County School Board. At this time, I want to note Mrs. Shea's physical absence from today's work meeting. Mrs. Shea previously notified board members of her request to participate electronically from a remote location due to a medical condition that prevents her physical attendance. Our school board policy P2-04-006, electronic participation in meetings from remote locations, requires a majority vote of board members present at the primary or central meeting location to allow a board member to participate in a meeting from a remote location. Per the school board policy, do I hear a motion?
I move that the school board approve Mrs. Shea's participation from a remote location.
Thank you, Mrs. Atkins. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Kinsella. I will now do a roll call vote. Mrs. Kinsella?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Atkins?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Mrs. Shea's request has been approved. This meeting is being live streamed on the HCPS website. We'll begin our meeting with a roll call. When I call your name, please verbally indicate your presence. Mrs. Kinsella?
Present.
Mr. Young?
Present.
Mrs. Atkins?
Present.
And Mrs. Shea?
Present.
Thank you. Please let the record reflect that a quorum of the board is physically present and Mrs. Shea is participating electronically. I ask Mrs. Shea to verbally note if she needs to leave the meeting and subsequently verbally note when she returns. We'll now move to the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda for today's meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Kinsella. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Atkins. I will now perform a roll call vote. Mrs. Kinsella?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Atkins?
Aye.
Mrs. Shea?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The ayes have it. The agenda is approved. Now, we'll go over to Dr. Cashwell.
Thank you, Vice Chair Irving, members of the board, and to our audience, good evening. We will begin our meeting as we always do with a pledge of allegiance, which will be followed by a moment of silence. We are thrilled this evening to have students from Highland Springs Elementary School here to lead us in the pledge. They're joined by their associate Principal Brown, who will come forward and introduce the students as they make their way to the podium. Would you please come forward?
Good evening, everyone. I have the honor of introducing three of our Springer leaders. We have Andrea Mendoza Lopez, member of the Spirit Team, Jazari Kitchen, member of, excuse me, Henrico History Project finalist, and Marshall Howard, excuse me, Marshall Howard, Henrico History finalist, and Jazari Kitchen, also a member of the School Spirit Team.
Let's give them a round of applause as a welcome, and then if you would, please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if you would please remain standing as you're able for the moment of silence. And that concludes our moment of silence. You may be seated. And how about another round of applause for our students from Highland Springs Elementary And now, the board members and I will make our way to the audience for our performance highlight, in which Tucker High School will perform.
All right, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Cashwell, colleagues and guests. My name is Christopher Mosley. I am the Education Specialist for Performing Arts. It is my pleasure to introduce for our performance highlight this evening, the JR Tucker High School Concert Choir, under the direction of Mr. Clint Miller. Mr. Miller is in his 26th year of teaching and his 20th year at JR Tucker. That's amazing. Students will perform "O Se Shalom" and "Está Noche." Please help me recognize these students as they get ready to perform.
Another round of applause for our incredibly talented Tucker students. Thank you, Mr. Miller and students.
The Virginia School Boards Association, or the VSBA, recently hosted a student video contest, inviting public high school students to creatively explore the theme of kindness through creative 30-second videos. Participants could choose from three impactful topics: kindness and mental health, random acts of kindness, or kindness in sports. Henrico County Public Schools saw impressive participation and ultimately selected a submission from the Center of Communication and Media Relations at Reina High School to represent the division. The selected video, titled "Overflow," focused on the theme kindness and mental health and earned first place in the 2024 VSBA Student Video Contest. The team was honored at the VSBA Annual Convention, receiving an award and certificates in recognition of their outstanding achievement. We are excited to be able to recognize the team of Charlie King, Brianna Christian, and Ace Powell, along with Center Director, Mr. Aaron Willoughby. Aaron and Charlie are present here tonight, and we invite them to come forward to receive a certificate of recognition.
Good evening. I'm Stacy Austin, one of the Directors of Elementary Education.
And I am Starlet Anderson, School Counseling Specialist for elementary schools.
And we are thrilled to be here for this next recommendation and recognition. Since 2018, the Virginia Department of Education and the Virginia Council on the Interstate Compact on Educational Opportunity for Military Children have designated Virginia public and private schools who demonstrate proven commitment to meeting the needs of military-connected students and their families as Purple Star Schools. This year, the Council voted to approve Henry D. Ward Elementary School as a recipient of Virginia's Distinguished Purple Star Award. To be recognized as a Purple Star School, the school must meet a comprehensive list of important actions, including but not limited to: identifying a school-based point of contact for all military students and their families; offering a student-led ambassador program to provide peer support for newly enrolled and withdrawing military-connected students; creating a webpage specifically dedicated to support military families and their students; and participating in full-school professional development to build awareness of the social and emotional impacts facing military family transitions. Ward was the only Richmond-area school recognized this year and Henrico County Public Schools' very first Purple Star Honoree. We'd like to invite the staff from Ward we have to accept this recognition. Proud Principal Dr. Tiffany Chapman-Smith, and Ward's dedicated school counselors, Madeline Andrews and Lexi Eckard. Congratulations again to the Ward Elementary School community.
And Vice Chair, if you don't mind, I know we need to move on to other recognitions, but I did skip over the visitor items because I didn't note all the visitors at that time. But I do know we have some staff and students from the Center for Innovation at Roff, as well as some students from Tucker High School. We may have some other visitors as well, and I just want to say welcome and thank you for joining us.
All right. Sorry, sorry. It's okay. All right, now we're going to move to our recognitions. I believe Ms. Atkins would like to share recognition of Black History Month.
I would, thank you. Proclamation for Black History Month, February 1st, 2025 through March 1st, 2025. Whereas, the Black and African-American community stands as a diverse representation of the African diaspora and the countless known and untold historic and cultural contributions with local, national, and global impact. And whereas throughout Virginia and American history, Black Americans have demonstrated resilience and perseverance through systemic oppression, through strategy, sacrifice, organization, and resistance. And whereas Black Americans have contributed indelibly to the fields of mathematics, science and technology, agriculture, education, architecture, politics, civil service, the arts, sports, and entertainment. And whereas Black Americans continue to enrich the local and global community with leadership and innovation. And whereas Henrico County Public Schools and the Henrico community recognize and embrace our respected Black and African-American community that continues to have an enduring legacy on shaping the history and culture of our schools, our county, our country, and our world. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the School Board of Henrico County Public Schools recognizes February 2025 as Black History Month and encourages observance and celebration to the attention of our citizens, recognized by the School Board of Henrico County Public Schools this 23rd day of January 2025. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Atkins. We'll now move to the recognition of National School Counseling Week with Mrs. Kinsella.
Thank you. National School Counseling Week, February 3rd through 7th, 2025. Whereas, school counselors are licensed and trained to design, manage, deliver, and assess comprehensive school counseling programs that improve student outcomes and promote student success. And whereas, a comprehensive school counseling program is based on data, delivered systematically, and utilizes a whole-child approach to address the academic achievement, post-secondary readiness, and social, emotional, mental health, and wellness of all students pre-K to 12. And whereas, school counselors are school-based mental health professionals uniquely qualified to identify and address a number of non-academic barriers that may get in the way of a young person to fully participate in school and learning. And whereas, students who have greater access to school counselors and comprehensive school counseling programs are more likely to succeed academically and behaviorally in school, particularly students in high-poverty schools. And whereas, as vital members of the school leadership team, school counselors are an integral part of the overall school vision and mission and directly contribute to the creation of a safe, supportive, and inclusive school climate. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the School Board of Henrico County Public Schools recognizes February 3rd to 7th, 2025 as National School Counseling Week, recognized by the School Board of Henrico County Public Schools this 23rd day of January 2025.
Thank you, Mrs. Kinsella. We'll now turn it over to Dr. Cashwell for the Henrico Highlights.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Henrico Highlights, a time when we spotlight the innovative teaching and learning happening in our schools. This month, we are stepping outside of the classroom to see how our students, teachers, administrators, and the entire school community came together in a time of need. In tonight's video, you'll see traits like empathy, resilience, responsibility, and perseverance, all essential for global citizenship. Let's take a look.
Very slow-moving storm, seeing a lot of impacts from it.
Likely to be a mixture of snow sleet and freezing rains, and a lot of schools that are closed due to the fact that there are icy neighborhood streets.
This boil water advisory coming alongside our first real significant snowfall.
To boil their water or rely on bottled water for drinking.
Distribution centers will open again tomorrow.
When we heard that they were mobilizing the Emergency Operations Center, that's when Henrico County Public Schools needed to send somebody to help assist the community with the crisis that we had at hand. What needs did the community have, and what resources did Henrico County Public Schools have to meet those needs?
Due to the crisis that happened last week with the lack of water and potable water, we just sprung into action, knowing that families would have issues with getting water and also having access to food. And so, we did two specific things. We partnered with Henrico County to provide water and deliver them to families all around the county.
Good, this is for y'all, okay. And we got one more case, too.
And we also were able to distribute over 2,500 food bags and packages to families at multiple locations throughout the county.
Okay, you got it? All right.
Initially, there were a few distribution sites that were set up at the Eastern Government Center and Eastern Recreation Center, but we quickly realized that there was an additional need to open up a few other locations to help the community to have easier access to their water.
So, on Wednesday, at about 5:15, I got a call from John Casulo that Tucker was going to be a water distribution site, and that we needed about 20 volunteers for the next day, which would have been Thursday. As the teachers came out, we had the interact club, we had ROTC kids here doing it, we were out in the cold from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Henrico County Government, Henrico Schools did a wonderful job. A ton of volunteers came out and helped last Thursday and Friday, passing out water bottles, passing out food. We had several students from Deep Run who were helping.
I always love just helping and being someone who helps. That's just who I am.
It was freezing, but honestly speaking, just the love and camaraderie between our school and our staff. At a moment's notice, they just came in and supported. So, we had our students out there supporting their own community, and so I think that it was just very heartwarming.
The Brooklyn team definitely responded when we needed the additional volunteers and support, but it was way more than that. People from all of the surrounding schools, elementary, middle, and high, all responded. Members of the family, community engagement team made sure they were here, the safety team, members of the security squad from around the county, and then a huge number from Central Office came out to provide support.
For our second day, we enlisted the support of our middle school colleagues, and they came in full number as well. So, shout out to Pocahontas, Elko, Roff, as well as Fairfield for being there for us. We really, really do appreciate it, and that's really what it's all about, coming together when our families and our community need it the most.
A huge thank you to our CNM crews who have been working hours and hours of overtime to make sure that our heat was working, our water is clean, ice is on the sidewalk so that we could safely welcome our students back to school. They really are the heart and soul of our building, and so we are so appreciative of And after yet another snow day this week, it's nice to pause for a moment and remind ourselves that not all learning happens in a classroom, and that skill assessment isn't always confined to a written test. In fact, one of the hallmarks of Henrico County Schools is our ability to come together and leverage our skills and knowledge to strengthen our community. And we've got more evidence of that tonight. I'd like to invite our 2024 Henrico Christmas Mother, Linda Melton, along with Jean Hayes and other members of the Henrico Christmas Mother Council to join the School Board Vice Chair in front of the dais. Tonight, we are proud to honor Linda Melton as the Heart of Henrico. A round of applause for Linda. So, Henrico Schools' partnership with the Henrico County Christmas Mother began as a tradition in 1942. In addition to sponsoring donation drives during October and November, each school plays a vital role in identifying families that may qualify for assistance. We're so proud of our partnership with the Henrico Christmas Mother, and now if you would turn and watch a video that highlights this partnership. would turn and watch a video that highlights this partnership. We have the Christmas Mother, Linda Melton, here with us.
Henrico Christmas Mother Representative, Linda Melton.
You know, there are people in the county who may not be as fortunate as you, and for those folk, I want to say on their behalf, I want to thank you. Thank you for the 1,800 cans of food that you and your families collected and donated to Henrico Christmas Mother. You remember to bring in goods to give to the Christmas Mother. I can't thank you all enough for all that you've done to make this a very successful year through donations, contributions, volunteerism. It's all wonderful. It takes a village to get it done, and I'm so appreciative to each and every one of you.
As a result of the school drives, HCPS provides the Henrico Christmas Mother with approximately 95% of the food and gifts distributed to Henrico families, seniors, and adults with disabilities during the holiday season. The total value of HCPS donations for 2024, including food, monetary donations, and other miscellaneous gifts, is $133,659, and we are so proud to support this wonderful community organization, to honor Linda Melton and the Henrico Christmas Mother Council as this And members of the board, that concludes our highlight and Heart of Henrico for this evening, and we look forward to another great season of giving in the upcoming year.
Now is time for the Henrico County Mission Statement. Mr. Young, would you be so kind as to read the mission statement?
Absolutely. Henrico County Public Schools, an innovative leader in educational excellence, will actively engage our students in diverse educational, social, and civic learning experiences that inspire and empower them to become contributing citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Now it's time for the public forum. The next item on the agenda is the public forum. This is the time when citizens are invited to address the School Board on any matter of concern about the school division. Citizens have signed up in advance and will be given three minutes to address the School Board. Speakers will be called to speak in the order in which they signed up and may not relinquish their spot to someone else. We ask that each speaker come to the microphone and clearly state your name and school affiliation, if applicable, and the subject of your remarks before speaking. After stating your name, please place the number you were given in the cart near the podium. Speakers must present their remarks to the School Board, not the audience, and may provide copies of their comments to the School Board clerk. The use of obscenity or defamation is strictly prohibited and will be ruled out of order. To assist you in tracking your time, there's a timekeeping system displaying the elapsed time on the screen. Speakers will also receive a notice from me when the time has expired. The School Board is here today to hear from you. We will not be responding to speakers' concerns or questions during the public forum. However, a Henrico County staff member will follow up with speakers. Stakeholders have also had the opportunity to provide written comments through an online form in advance of the meeting. Those comments are shared with School Board members prior to the meeting and posted in board docs. Equal consideration and attention will be given to both written and in-person comments. We appreciate your attendance here this evening and for providing your input. The first speaker is Speaker Number One.
First, give an honor to my Lord and Savior, Madam Superintendent, members of the Board. I'm here today to speak on a free golf education and life development program. My name is Ray Beasley. I currently serve as an appointee to the Henrico County Recreation and Parks Committee, known as the Belmont Advisory Committee. This committee is the county's interest regarding youth golf accessibility to Henrico County residents. I am also the Henrico Pal Golf Coordinator, and I am the founder and president of Henrico County Hookah Kid on Golf. I'm here today to announce, beginning February 1, 2025, we will begin identifying and selecting 120 Henrico County Middle School students to participate in a free golf education and life development program. We will be selecting sixth, seventh, and eighth graders for the Henrico County Help, Care, Prepare, Support STEAM L Academy. That's right, HCPS, I said it. Our strategy is to develop their golf acumen so they can learn and understand the rules of golf. We're going to develop their golf skills and knowledge from the greens back to the tee by beginning with a short game academy. This means pitching, chipping, and putting. Our golf activities will include pitch, chipping, and putting competitions and activities, wiffle ball golf competition and activities, top golf leagues for middle and high school students. Our plan includes having grade-level competitions so we can come out of it with a sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade short game champion. We understand for us to be successful, we have to make sure they capture the scope, fun, and opportunity in and around golf. The breakdown will be 60 girls and 60 boys. While some activities will be in collaboration, we intend to engage boys and girls separately as much as possible. This will allow us to take advantage of some amazing organizations that have committed to support this effort. Our strategy also includes sponsoring high school golf clubs. Part of their core mission will be to engage with middle school students in their feeder school pattern. This will help us with our core mission, which is to prepare students for transition to high school and ACE. We believe this will greatly impact high school golf participation. Golf is a sport that requires continuous engagement. Our plan is students selected to attend the academy can remain in the academy until they graduate high school unless they decline acceptance or fail to maintain requirements and standards for participation. Phase one of our target will be Roth Middle School, Fairfield Middle School, and Moody Middle School. We hope teachers and administrators will assist us in our selection process by nominating students they feel would greatly benefit from this experience. Anyone interested in helping us, please email me at golf@henricopal.org. Finally, I would like to acknowledge the gentleman Lloyd Young, the founder of River City Sports. You will hear from him as the speaker also. And a special thank you to Ms. Leslie Mosley, founder of Ladies Golf, too. And a special thank you to Matt.
Thank you, Speaker Number One. The time has expired. I apologize.
Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Speaker Number Two.
Good evening, Vice Chairman and members of the School Board. My name is Jack George, and I'm a 10th grader attending Center for the Arts Program at Henrico High School. Members of the School Board, I was in attendance at Henrico High School on December 4, 2024, and experienced one of the most frightening moments of my life. This evening, I'm not going to talk about my personal experience during the incident because I believe my fellow peers described the experience already in enough detail during the last School Board meeting. However, I will be talking about the steps that I believe have and have not been taken to ensure myself and my fellow classmates' safety in the future. Members of the School Board, I would first like to take a moment to tell you that I appreciate all of the work you do to keep students safe, but there's more to be done. On December 5, 2024, I came back to school scared, and I could feel the tension throughout the school. That day, students were treated with therapy dogs, child psychiatrists, and the ability to decide if we wanted to go to our class or stay in the library with all of the counselors. There was also a much bigger police presence, and faculty was much more strict with students while going through the metal detectors. However, by the next day, I didn't see the same improvement. There were no therapy dogs, no child psychiatrists, and there was much smaller security presence, and the faculty was much less strict with the metal detectors. The faculty who stood at guard at the metal detectors were teachers. And throughout my time at Henrico High School, teachers have had limited planning and instruction time because they are having to deal with being involved in school security. Teachers have expressed to me that they do not have the training when dealing with school security and safety issues, and they are constantly trying to break up fights, being on bathroom duty and watching the metal detectors. This is affecting the teacher's ability to be proactive in the classroom, which is affecting students' ability to learn. Another issue I'd like to bring up is our school's open campus. Henrico High School has had an open, excuse me, Henrico High School has had an open campus layout that allows intruders clear access to about 90% of our classrooms, which scares me and my peers. All we have at our school to protect us is a security officer on a golf cart and a few resource officers scattered throughout the campus. We live in a nation where the number-one cause of death for youth in America is gun violence. And if our school doesn't get more security enhancements, that puts the students and faculty at a much higher risk to being in harm's way. To summarize what I've stated, that I would like for the School Board to consider implementing long-term mental health resources for students, enhancing our school security, and to allow our teachers to teach without adding additional burdens on them. Members of the School Board, thank you so much for your time and willingness to let me speak on these issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker Number Two.
Good evening. My name is Lloyd Young. I'm the Executive Director of River City Dreams, a local nonprofit that encourages kids to further their careers and professions in STEAM. I've got basically three key points tonight. First, I am a resident of Glen Allen, where my two sons attend Hungry Creek Middle School, Aiden in eighth grade, and Eli in sixth grade, and with my lovely wife Courtney, who is also a graduate of Virginia State University, where I was a student athlete. I would like to tell you more about River City Dreams. River City Dreams is a local nonprofit. We try to weave in STEAM, which includes the arts, into various sports activities. We've developed numerous relationships with NASCAR, Richmond International Raceway, Microsoft, and the Harlem Globetrotters. We currently serve as a vendor for the HAV program at John Roth Middle School, and we look to further our reach to other schools in Henrico County Public Schools. I am here today to support the Henrico STEAM L Golf Initiative. This initiative is very dear to me. As a child, I was not introduced to golf. I didn't pick up golf until I was an adult, and I think it's very important for these young men and young women to be exposed to golf at a very early age, not only golf, but the STEAM education that will come with that. And River City Dreams proudly supports this initiative. Another key point I heard tonight was talking about perseverance and facing challenges. If you golf, you know that there's going to be many challenges on the golf course. So, what better way for these kids to learn about facing challenges and just trying to see it through persevere, get through the nine holes or 18 holes or whatever they may be playing? Lastly, as a member of Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated, we proudly support this initiative as well, along with our other Divine Nine fraternity and sorority brothers and sisters. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker Number Three. Speaker Number Four. Speaker Number Four.
Good evening. My name is Marlene Sherlock, and our family lives in the Fairfield District. Back in November, I asked about our cell phone policy, and I'll ask again following up on a recent article in the Henrico Citizen, and hearing our own students' first semester experience. While I personally like our current policy for high school students and how it was carefully crafted, I don't think even it is being consistently implemented. More crucially, I sincerely don't believe it meets the Virginia DOE bell-to-bell ban initiated by the Governor's Executive Order 33. But our Division spokesperson's comment is that you'll review it along with the rest of the Code of Conduct this spring. Sounds like a willful disregard of state guidelines requiring such a policy as of January 1, 2025. You knew it was coming, you know it's here, and the specific guidelines have been available since the fall. Even the city of Richmond Public Schools changed their policy mid-school year to come into compliance, yet we seem to have the cavalier attitude that we'll get to it when we get to it. How then can you possibly expect our students and staff to adhere to your policies and rules? Isn't one of the tenants of leaderships to model the behavior you expect? On a different front, I'd like to follow up on the presentation you received this afternoon about specialty centers. Being a part of a school community with three different centers, I can tell you two things. Most students and families are happy with them, but realize there are some significant challenges that aren't often conveyed during the application admissions process. Two of the biggest issues are scheduling and transportation. We're fortunate at Tucker to have a full eight-block schedule. Many center programs, particularly IB and ACA, are highly scripted and don't leave students much flexibility for study hall or electives. Please continue to let the schools with the eight-block template maintain their bell schedules. And finally, thank you, Ms. Atkins and Ms. Kinsella. Transportation is a very real issue. As a non-zone center family, we were initially grateful for bus transportation, but it became harder and harder to justify the full hour to an hour twenty-minute each-way of commuting time when we live and attend school in the middle of the county. It's much worse for a Verona or Deep Run zone kid to attend anything at the opposite end of the county. I get it, Henrico is huge, and you want to provide the opportunity to all, but it's still hard. And this issue doesn't even begin to touch on coordinating before and after-school activities for students and families who have to travel long distances so they can fully participate in their student's school community. If you want broader cross-country participation, we'll need to brainstorm some additional ideas like facilitating car pools, aligning activity times, and even considering transportation alternatives and allowances. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker Number Five, and thank you to all speakers who came out tonight and made the trip. Dr. Cashwell.
Thank you. The next and final items are consent items, and they can be taken in a block.
Are there any requests from School Board members that an item be separated for School Board discussion and/or individual action?
Vice Chair Irving, I have an item, item 9.04. I would just like the item highlighted before we vote on the consent agenda. Dr. Cashwell, if you would.
Certainly, sorry, certainly. This is a recommendation that the Board approve a proposal from Sports Lighting LLC in the amount of $322,970 for replacement of the stadium lighting at Hermitage High School.
Thank you so much, and that's an enthusiastic "thank you so much" on behalf of Hermitage High School in the Brooklyn District. Thank you. Vice Chair Irving.
Are there any other requests to highlight or take any out for individual discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion to take them as a block?
I move the School Board accept, adopt, approve, and/or award items 9.01 through 9.09 on the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Kinsella. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Atkins. We'll now take a roll call vote. Mrs. Kinsella?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Atkins?
Aye.
Mrs. Shea?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The ayes have it. Items 9.01 through 9.09 on the consent agenda are approved. We will now move on to unfinished business. Colleagues, do you have any unfinished business? Hearing none, we will move on to new business. Hearing none, we will move on to new business. Colleagues, do we have any new business? Hearing none, we will move on to the announcement of the meeting dates. The School Board's next meeting will be a work session on Thursday, February 13, 2025, at 3:00 p.m., followed by a budget public hearing at 5:00 p.m. Meeting times may be adjusted as needed. This meeting is adjourned.